I'd like to call the committee of the whole meeting of September 23rd to order. If the clerk could call the roll, please.
Kabini Minvers-Brown.
Here.
Jacobson. Madigan.
Here.
Marlin.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Smythe.
Here.
Chair Ammons.
Here.
Mayor Pressing.
Here.
Are there any additions to the agenda or any staff reports we can do first? We'll take the mayor's report first.
Okay, thank you. I have two reports. First one is about the hotel motel tax. And we put together the comparison of how Urbana's done over the last three years compared with Champaign. We increased our hotel motel tax from 5% to 6%, a 1% increase effective October 1st, 2011. And so we show you what the change was with the increase included and then when we back out the increase, what that change is. And so we, last year, we grew by 7.8% without the rate increase and that compared with 3.2% in Champaign. So, once again, for the second year, it doesn't seem that backing out of the Convention and Visitors Bureau harmed us in any way and neither did raising the rate. Because I don't think people make a decision on where they want to stay based on whether the hotel motel tax is 5% or 6%. And both cities have pretty low percentages compared to many other cities. Anybody have a question on that one? Okay, then I have the continuing saga of how we're going to bridge the budget gap. And this is a revision over what I gave you in June. The biggest single thing that we could do is reduce our increase in health insurance to zero. And that would save us $500,000 a year. What I had suggested when we were doing the budget was that we keep the budget amount for this year the same as it was last year. And both years were at 2.5 million. But since we only spent 2 million last year, if we could hold the actual spending at that level, we would be able to take a half a million dollars out of the general corporate budget. I would point out that right now, Health Alliance has the highest rates in Illinois and one of the highest, if not the highest, in the whole country. And they essentially have a monopoly. So, going through the cuts, you already know Mike Munson put together the 178,500 consisting of some reductions in Public Works Legal and Police by closing the front desk over a few hours at night. And then we'd save another $5,000 just as an example when there's a new police officer replacing a veteran. This is just for the six months. And $56,000 for, if we don't fill three positions for three months, it'll be more than that if it's more than three months. And this year, we only have, we have smaller transfers required to the pension funds. So that's good news. It's a little hard to figure out what year to put it in, but this is $214,000. It could be more than that. And then if we lowered the health insurance, that would save $500,000. We have an emergency budget amendment coming tonight for the air conditioning unit in the city. And we're going to have $82,000 to reestablish the IT director position, which Bill DeJarnette was going to do two positions for a while. But I don't think that's a good idea to try with somebody new. So, the net reduction in spending would be $811,500. And when you combine that with the estimated quarter cent tax increase for six months of $343,000, you end up with a little bit over a million dollars. So, obviously, there's other ways to do this, but this is where my thinking is now. And certainly, we'd like to hear your ideas as well. Anybody have a question? Diane?
When is the reason that the transfer to the pension fund would be lower this year?
Well, what happened when the recession hit was that the stock market went way down and so pension funds earned less on investments. And now that the stock market is up, their investments are doing much better, so they don't need so much of an infusion. We had to increase our amounts to IMRF and to, this is just for the fire and police, which are run locally. So now, we don't have to do that anymore. So that's good news.
So that's year to year, basically?
Right. But, you know, as long as the stock market is doing well, I wouldn't expect that we would have to do an increase in the contributions. But these increases or decreases, well, the budget amount that has to be allocated to the pension funds is determined by actuaries. And they base it kind of on a long-term thing. It's not just a short-term thing. So, we always put in what the actuaries say. And that is also how IMRF is run. And that's why, even though the state has huge pension plan problems, the Illinois Municipal Fund and our local fire and police pension funds are in good shape. Because we keep putting the money in that we're supposed to put in. Any other questions, Senator Mayor? Mr. Madigan?
Yeah, I note that you indicate here that Health Alliance has the highest rates in Illinois and one of the highest, if not the highest, in the nation because of a monopoly. Can you please provide us with some detail to back that statement up?
Yes, I will be happy to. We have one, I got this from our insurance broker, but I'd be happy to give you the detail. That's a good question. And I did get, when we had the meeting about the Affordable Care Act, one of our employees who had moved here from Ohio said that his premiums had doubled. And he gave me the memo on that, but I will get you that information. Any other questions from the council?
Thank you, Mayor Pressing. We have one other staff report from Ms. Carino.
Yes, thank you, good evening. I have an update on the Urbana Landmark Hotel. Just some information on the hotel. There are currently 45 rooms open to the public. In speaking with the owner, he's looking to open another 23 rooms in the next couple of weeks. He's installed new heating and air conditioning units in approximately 69 rooms at this point. And you can see some repairs on the south wall of the Jumers addition. That's related to the heating and air conditioning units and the repair of the walls that had to happen after those heating and air conditioning units came out. Some of the areas of the hotel that are now open to the public include the alumni tap, the breakfast area, the library, the ballroom. And an event room in the basement are all now open to the public. The conference room space is currently being renovated and we should expect that to be open in the coming months. Related to occupancies, overall, they are stable. Weekdays are lower occupancy, the weekends are better. And then weekends when there are special events happening in the community are very strong. As the owner gets more rooms open and commons areas available to the public, he's preparing to engage in an aggressive marketing campaign that's going to include traditional marketing and also agreements with travel websites such as Expedia and other travel websites. City representatives from the mayor's office and community development meet regularly with the owner related to improvements and the overall project. And we work with the owner related to progress on the improvements and also, from time to time, refocusing on certain improvements to make sure that it's a property that we can all be proud of. So, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
Mr. Madigan?
So, just what are the weekday and weekend occupancy rates?
They're actually not available. It's competitive information that we, I believe the state sends us hotel motel tax, but the, we're, I don't have access to individual occupancy data, much like sales tax data. We don't have individual sales tax data for individual businesses. So, the state provides us sales tax and hotel motel tax data to our finance department, but the finance department can't share individual data with me or anyone else.
So, not trying to kill the messenger here, but let me get this straight. The city puts in how much?
Over five years, it's 1.45 million.
So, we're 1.45 million into this and we don't know what the occupancy rate is? That's not in the contract? He doesn't have to share that even confidentially with us?
I believe there are members of the finance department that might have access to that data, but I don't have access to that data.
Would it be something we could learn in executive session?
I'm not sure.
Is there someone else that can answer that?
I'm not aware of any statute or ordinance that makes that information confidential. If we ask the owner, I don't see, you know, in executive session, I don't see why he, as long as he is assured it will not be disclosed to anybody. But we'd have to be very, very careful about that because that is a very serious competitive piece of information.
Well, I understand that, but I mean, I don't think it's any secret that an empty parking lot means a problem with occupancy. So, given the city's investment here, I would think that it's incumbent upon the city council to, by whatever means we can, press for that information. I think it's very important to understand what's going on there. I mean, what I see is a parking lot that doesn't have a whole lot of cars in it on most days and I go by there regularly. But what I do see is a bunch of used chairs out there with signs on them that the chairs are for sale. I frankly find that stunning. I think he should be landscaping the parking lot and not putting used chairs out for sale in order to maybe improve his image a little bit. Those are the kind of things I think we ought to be right and heard on him about. And I'm not criticizing anyone here. I'm just saying, I think we need to start, not start. I know you guys are doing a lot to work with him. But there are a few things that I think image-wise, he could improve upon. And I think there's some information we ought to start getting a handle on. Even though the staff may be doing that, I think the council ought to be apprised of that because ultimately, you know, we're the ones who are going to wear the hair shirt for this thing succeeding or failing.
Thank you. Mayor Pressing? Yeah, the staff has talked with him a lot and I say, I think he's come a long way. And the inside of the hotel looks beautiful. And he's come across things that were not known. He had to repair an outside wall. And so, these are huge projects, but I think he's making steady progress. And when he gets those rooms completed, he's going to have more business. Because right now, he's not ready for a heavy marketing campaign because the rooms aren't ready yet. Ms. Marlin?
And the status of, he was due the next installment of the funding from the city. What's the status of that? That was due in July.
Sure. So, to date, the amount available to him was $1,050,000 in the form of a loan. That, so he has requested through submitting eligible expenses, he has requested the full $1,050,000 and that's been paid. He has submitted a new request for payment. That, there was an additional $200,000 available to him as of July 15th. He has submitted that request. We are processing that request. That request is, so I'm sorry, let me back up. He had available to him $1,050,000. He actually requested previously $1,063,543.53. So he had $13,543.53 available to him in carryover that was not available to him initially. So, he has new requests of $69,021.24. When you add in the $13,543 and change carryover, he has a, we are processing a payment to him of $82,564.77. And that is from money that was made available to him on July 15th of 2013. So that is, the $1,050,000 was paid, there, an additional $82,564.77 is processing right now for payment.
Other questions? Ms. Brown?
So what would be the next milestone that he has to reach? Is there, are there milestones or is it just another $200,000 next year in reimbursement?
There's $200,000 that was made available on July 15th of this year. There's an additional $200,000 that will be available to him on July 15th of 2014. That will be, that will be the total over five years of 1.45 million. He, as far as milestones, he is working towards having the 128 rooms available, open to the public as well as conference space and restaurant space. And that is what the agreement calls for, is the rooms, the conference space, and the restaurant.
Ms. Marlin?
So if he has 23 more rooms ready, well, that's this week, late September. Will he make that prediction? And then, that's only 68 out of the 128 rooms. When, what's the timeline for the next, well, for the rest of the rooms? Do you know?
In talking to him this week, again, he mentioned the 45 currently open and the 23 coming. He does, the agreement calls for 128 rooms to be open for the project to be complete. I'd have to talk to him in more depth as to the exact scheduling of the full 128 rooms. But as I said, at this point, we're looking at 45 right now plus 23 and then more rooms coming online.
Other questions? Mr. Roberts?
Well, yeah, I walked through the hotel last week with him and just as, you know, I guess for information that I saw, he's working on the upper stories of the, you know, third and fourth floor, renovating them right now. He intended to have all the air conditioning units installed in the inside-facing corridors of the Jumer wing of the building, which he's finished doing. And they're about, their efficiency is like twice as good as the previous old ones. So he's going to be doing next, replacing the units on the exterior face facing north. And he wanted to get that done next. It takes rather a long time, but the new units are installed in groups of four vertically and so it's a different configuration. So it's taking him some time to do that. But I guess he's going to try to open up the interior-faced rooms as soon as he can and the other ones, as soon as those are finished, too.
Thank you. Any other? Mr. Smythe?
Tom, could you just remind us how reimbursements occur? Like, you know, is it for work done? What kind of work done? That sort of thing. And is he getting money upfront or not?
Sure. Well, there are a per state TIF, the TIF Act, TIF statutes. We can only reimburse him for certain eligible, state-eligible TIF expenses. And those include things that are integral to the space or integral to the building. And they also have to be reimbursements. So he must actually physically spend the money, submit a receipt, or submit some kind of proof that what he purchased or paid money for was installed. Submit those receipts to us for review. We confirm that they are TIF-eligible per the state TIF Act. And then we pay on a reimbursement basis, based on those expenses that he's incurred.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Madigan?
Back to the, so $82,564.77 being reimbursed out of the $200,000 that's available this year. If he submits no receipts the rest of this fiscal year, does the remainder of that $200,000 roll over or does it expire?
It's a rollover. The total available to him over the five years is 1.45 million. So, if he were to incur no additional expenses, that would roll over and be available to him for future expenses.
Ms. Marlin?
Is there a way to require one specific improvement to be done? And I'm referring to the elevators. And the one comment I hear from people who, not the function of the elevators, but the appearance of the elevators, the wallpaper, which is old and stained and frankly, doesn't smell very good. And it gives a very, very bad impression to a guest, you know, once you leave the lobby and you're heading to your room. So, how do we get that fixed? I just cannot imagine why that has not yet been changed out yet.
I will certainly pass that along to XJ. We, representatives of the mayor's office, building safety, economic development, community development, we meet and work with him regularly. And we do make suggestions or recommendations on appropriate improvements. And I will talk to him. And we've spoken to him in the past about elevators. And there are some concerns about, there are limits as to what he can do because of operational issues and they, it has to be acceptable to the state and to the elevator company. But we will, we certainly have and certainly will bring up again the possibility of improving the elevators.
Yeah, I mean, this isn't a functional thing. I mean, they're slow, but they're old. But what I'm referring to is just aesthetically, it's just awful. So, he has to fix that. And I would like, if our money is being spent, that's one place I think it would be appropriate to spend it.
Mayor Pressing and then Mr. Madigan? He's well aware of the elevators and part of the things about getting things looking really good is he doesn't want to do it until the construction is finished. You know, the air conditioners and everything. Because if he's going to put new carpets in, they would get kind of wrecked. So, he understands about the elevators. Mr. Madigan?
Can you add maybe landscaping the parking lot to your list of concerns? I mean, I just, I think that if there were less weeds and no used furniture out there, you know, he's done a nice job with the portico and all that. I'll give him that. But I mean, I, you know, the first thing that people realize about your, about your business is the exterior when they're pulling up. And believe me, I've booked hotels online that I have refused to take my family into just because of the exterior appearance. I've moved on, down the road, canceled a reservation, move on. I'm not so sure that that's not happening to him. I hope not, but I don't think I would, you know, based on the exterior appearance at this point in time, take my family there if I was from out of town. So I think that's a fair thing to add to the list. A couple more things, and I'm sorry to belabor this, but this is a big deal for the city. His capitalization, I'm assuming that that's something that we do know about, given our financial relationship with him?
As a condition precedent of the original agreement, he had to submit to us some financial records, bank accounts, various bank accounts. Basically, he had to show us that he had the financial wherewithal to do the project. And he's done that. Related to the project, he is primarily doing this project with cash, meaning I don't believe he's done any financing or borrowed any money to do this project. So, for the most part, it's a cash deal. And yes, he did have to submit bank accounts and show he had the financial wherewithal to do the project.
Okay, so, the reason I ask that question is we're talking about, he's talking about embarking on a marketing campaign here in the near future, once he gets more of these rooms up to snuff. So he does have the financial wherewithal to embark on that marketing campaign. Okay, thank you.
All right, okay.
I have an addition to the agenda for, we're on to the next topic.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Carino. Mr. Smythe?
Yes, I'd like to add an item number nine, which is a discussion of city council goals, the potential of scheduling a study session and some of the, and getting some feedback from individual council members. So I'd like to have that just before the adjournment.
Yeah, I'll second that if you need that.
Thank you. Do we need to vote on that? All those in favor of addition to the agenda, say aye. Any opposition? Say none. Thank you. Entertainer motion to approve amendments for the previous meeting.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Smythe, seconded by Mrs. Marlin. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Those approve. Public input. I'll read first, Bishop King James Underwood and Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood wanted to just state their concern continually about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problem, which remains to be a concern for them. And called upon Carol McCusick to speak at the podium. You have five minutes, Ms. McCusick, and the clerk will take care of that for you.
There's so many things, so I'm going to suggest people look at videos. On 9/16, at the special meeting, I was calling attention to the way that something on September 3rd had been passed. And that was something I care a lot about, which is the municipal electric aggregation. It was the bill that was the authorization for the mayor for accepting a bid. And at the special meeting on the 16th, what I was bringing up was that, that there was a voice vote and the, I felt that the result was announced incorrectly, that the voices clearly indicated a success of the, it was an amendment. And the mayor said it failed. Okay, well, when I brought this up in petitions and communications on the 16th, at, okay, first, I guess I should say that the vote, the place you can find where, listen to the recording of that vote, in case it's important, how it sounds on the recording is at, it's for 2013, no, 2013-08-44R. And you go to the slider location 16:48, 16 minutes and 48 seconds. And there, that's where that vote's taking place. Now, on the 16th, I'm trying to say, go to the special meeting of the council on 9/16 and then go to the petitions and communications video and go to the slider location 8 minutes and 19 seconds, because that's where Eric Jacobson is asserting what had, alter person, Eric Jacobson is asserting what had happened on September 3rd. So, does it matter what we in the audience hear? This is the question I'm raising, is, does it matter if the vote, the voices appear to, to say, to be different than what, how you're calling it? How, how the mayor is calling it or the council is calling it? Do we count out there, how we hear it? So that's a question. And then I wanted to go on to, about the contract itself, to remember that the one thing they're holding on to, I mean, they have, the consultant takes it from us and then they have almost complete latitude, including they're sort of like working up the legal documents. We have, so, everything is sort of turned over to them. And the one thing we're counting on is that they're putting together such a lot of people so that you're going to get a good price. But the bottom drops out of the whole thing because of the fact that there's juggling in the price. So that, which is the thing that the PEA that Scott has been talking about because, and that's not all of the juggling. There's other kinds of juggling, too. It's this thing about the meter beat price is going to be, out of that, okay, there's this, the price that you like to pay on the bill, the .04055.
You have one minute, Ms. McCusick.
Every customer has had .04055. Every customer has had .04055 per kilowatt hour in this first contract. But part of, like, components of that price have been due to the purchase of REX, that have been due to the city fee and the municipal fee. Well, what, next time, it's totally in the hands of the consultant, what of those elements are going to be included for the price to beat Ameren with? And then on the other side, Ameren's using this adjustment, PEA adjustment, every month. So, you never know you're beating them. So, that's one thing. And the other thing is, they have control of the length of the contract. It's not going to be two years necessarily next time. And this consultant is getting paid like, they'll be getting paid like $60,000 a year for the same amount of kilowatts that we've been using lately. So, you know, in other words, they could have, they just come back with a bid, they only have one for three years. We're giving them that much money every single month, is the thing of it.
As far as the vote goes, I made the amendment, and I was paying real careful attention to who said what. And I think if there was any doubt, I could have probably called for a roll call, or hands, or show of hands or something. But I would have definitely said something if I thought it was called wrong. You probably just couldn't hear on the tape because some of the mics weren't on or something.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I didn't have my mic on. So, that was kind of my fault. But I agree with Bill, the parliamentary procedure is, if no council member challenges the voice vote, it stands.
Thank you, Ms. McCusick. All right, we will go on to item five on the agenda ordinance number 2013-09-089. Entertain a motion. Mr. Smythe.
So moved.
Second.
I guess we should probably read it. Ordinance number 2013-989.
Madam Chair.
Oh.
I'm sorry, I need to recuse myself from this.
Yes, sir, Mr. Madigan is recusing.
Okay, I'll read, read the ordinance. Ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 343, increasing the number of Class A liquor licenses for A-plus Restaurant and Entertainment LLC, doing business as A-plus VIP Lounge at 214 West Main Street.
Motion by Mr. Smythe, who was the seconder? Ms. Marlin? Any discussion on this item? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. Committee moves Resolution Number 2013-09-050, resolution for improvement by municipality under the Illinois Highway Code, Philo Road and Florida Avenue. I entertain a motion on that resolution as well.
Let's get a staff report here on that one.
I'd like to do the motion first, and then open for discussion, including staff.
Okay, so moved. Well, moved to send to council, well, the issue is, we moved to send to council, we recommend a show of approval, but we don't know if we're gonna, yeah, that's why we need to do the, that's why we do the staff report.
All right, gotcha. So, we'll do the staff report, and then come back to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Little background first, the Florida Avenue Philo Road intersection for new council members, over a year ago, we had a modern roundabout study performed at this location to see if that would be an acceptable form of traffic control. After the study and public input, it was determined to abandon those ideas. This intersection has a heavy number, large number of pedestrians across. Many are elderly, many folks have disabilities, so it's a key intersection for access to the Sunny Crest Shopping Area. We then went into a traditional intersection design with traffic signals, et cetera. What was originally budgeted, which was originally looked at in the motor fuel tax resolution, was for just replacement of the signals themselves. There was no consideration at that time for additional expenses, which include intersection bump outs. We saw opportunities at the intersection to shorten the distance that people cross Florida, or shorten the distance of people to cross Philo Road. And this is important for a lot of reasons. First of all, literally, the number of lanes has shrunk down to three lanes, which used to be five lanes. Secondly, with the distance being shorter, the length of tying, that the light has to be green for pedestrians across can be reduced and be more efficient to the demands of pedestrians and for motorists. So, that's an important factor. We also replaced the lighting in the intersection. All the equipment there is, as the memo says, 35 years old and early beyond its useful life. So, we're also looking at a new type of detection system. Traditionally, in most intersections in Urbana, you'll see close to an intersection in the pavement loops that detect more or less the metal. It's an electric current that, there's a flux, if you will, change that sends a signal to the controller to tell us the number and types of vehicles that may be going through an intersection. The pavements here are concrete pavements, and it's a little more difficult to use loops in that type of pavement. And we're using a detection system that's called forward-looking infrared video detection. That's a mouthful. But the beauty with this detection through our research is, is not only will it detect vehicles, but it'll also detect bicycles. And now that we have bike lanes on Florida Avenue, east and westbound, and north and south on Philo Road, this is literally an intersection where we will have more and more bicycle traffic. So, that system is not inexpensive, but we felt this is a good location for that to be installed. So, anyway, we did open bids, the bids came in. We were a little disappointed, there weren't more than one bidder. We talked to two other bidders that have bid this type of work in the past, and based on their workload, et cetera, they were not interested or available. So, the contractor is a contractor that has done a lot of work for us in the past and does good work for us. But with that number in place, we wanted to come back to city council and let them know what the new total, total number is for this project, which on the second page is, turns out to be, with little modest contingency for possible construction change orders, $450,000. So, this intersection with new signals, new streetlights, bump outs at the intersections is a $450,000 project. So, in order for us to proceed, we need to, excuse me, we need to have a supplemental motor fuel tax, and this is state motor fuel tax funds, resolution to be able to cover all our expenses. The Phase 1 and Phase 2 engineering design fees have already been expended. It's, the construction is the next phase. We're going to use city staff to do the construction observation, construction administration. There's a modest amount of engineering fees from Esca, who's the consultant, to assist with any shop drawing review, that sort of thing with the Phase 3 engineering. So, one other thing I'll add, we decided not to use always stops, stop signs during the removal of the old signals. So, we are paying a few more dollars, around $10,000, $15,000 to keep the existing signals operational while we construct the new traffic signals. We felt this was important because there's such a high pedestrian count there versus an always stop sign, which we have done at some locations like downtown.
Questions from the committee. I'll start with Ms. Marlin, and then I'll move around.
This seems like just incredibly expensive. Is this what we're going to be seeing for intersections from here on out? I mean, do you consider this a standard intersection, or is this particularly costly?
This is what I would say is the standard replacement for, when you get into the geometry of the intersection, as we know from the downtown projects, when we're starting to deal with the ramps and bumping out curbs, that's just very expensive work. You know, it almost goes, you know, $30,000 to $50,000 per corner, excuse me, yeah, per corner, or $120,000 to $150,000, $200,000 to do the whole four corners. So, yes, it's expensive. To give you an example, Green and Goodwin is next year's project, and we did award a contract for that. That's new signals, a little more lighting beyond the intersection. It goes 300 feet either side of Goodwin Avenue, east and west of Goodwin Avenue on Green Street. However, it includes a million in resurfacing, about 700 feet of pavement on Green Street. That's a $900,000 project.
So, where is this $210,000 coming from? Is it being pulled off another project that was planned for this money?
It's coming from available motor fuel tax dollars that we have.
That had not been allocated.
That have not been allocated yet, correct. It's part of our fund balance, if you will, in motor fuel taxes.
Thank you.
Mr. Roberts was next, and then Mayor Presson.
Yeah, so, you partly answered a question I was going to ask about the accessibility ramps. For this, for this particular corner, that's going to be a real important addition.
Yes.
So, that's part of the expense.
Absolutely.
I know that they're very expensive. I mean, just, I've heard that just doing a ramp alone was several thousands of dollars. I guess it's the material and the work of, the workmanship of laying the cement, or whatever?
Yes, and if anybody's paid any attention to the work downtown, you'll see the intricacies. Right now, the northwest corner, Broadway and Main, while there's still one ramp area being done, I mean, just take a look at it, it takes about a month to do the work. It's just, it's little bits at a time. It's just very involved.
And we're doing that because it's really part of our accessibility, it's really required by the state, isn't it, to, or is it not?
Bump outs are not required by the state.
Not bump outs, but the ramps.
Oh, it's a federal law.
It's a federal law.
It's Americans with Disability Act law.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
Technically, if we didn't do the bump outs, we could allow, right now, the ramps meet ADA requirements.
Okay.
But we know that we've had a lot of public input on the difficulty of people crossing the intersection. We have an extraordinarily large amount of green tying to allow people to cross. Typically, you may figure three to four feet per second is a length of time, and then maybe four, five, six seconds to react, to start walking. We are more in the one to two foot per second range at that intersection because of the ability or capabilities of people that cross that intersection. Able-bodied people go more than two times as fast.
And can you tell me a little bit about, you know, the determining the lifespan of the signals themselves? I know that signals can cost up to a quarter of a million dollars at an intersection.
Yes.
35 years is a long time to have a signal, but if it's still running, is it really, is it time to, I mean, you're going to continue using them during the retrofitting or the, you know, for the intersection?
Correct.
Can they be used in other intersections in the future, or are they past tense now?
Controller is totally obsolete, parts aren't even available anymore.
Oh.
So, that's, that's one thing. We try to salvage whatever we can from any traffic signal project we do, if there's parts that we deem reusable, perhaps in other location. But keep in mind that the length of the mast arms are almost unique to every intersection. It's just the way it works out, because even though you may have a four lanes, or three lanes, or five lanes wide, you never know where literally that foundation is going to go because of utilities and the geometry of the corners, whatever. So, if it's eight foot behind the curb, or three foot behind the curb, even though it's all things being equal, that changes the length of that cantilever and mast arm, for example. So, but if you look at 704 Glover, we do have a fair amount of salvaged traffic signal equipment there, that just in case something happens.
Okay, thanks.
Mayor Presson.
Case in point is, just a little side story, but we had a high-speed chase, car crash, vehicle crash at Guardian Drive and University Avenue, and it totally obliterated the traffic controller. I believe that picture was in a newspaper. And we were like, oh, boy, what am I going to do? That's not a stock situation. And fortunately, a contractor, in fact, it was CSNL, had one available in their yard that we used as an interim situation.
Mayor Presson.
Yeah, I was just going to comment on sticker shock for intersections. The first one I found out about, I was on the County Highway Committee, and I thought it costs just as much to build a house as to do the lighting at an intersection. And that's continued over the years. So, if you haven't seen it before, you will be shocked the first time.
Mr. Smythe.
But I think the safety improvements are probably worth it here in this case. Question for Bill on this one, though, is if you add the bump outs, one of the things I was hoping for was that we'd have a right turn lane, particularly for southbound traffic on Philo, so that we'd have a real right turn lane, so that, so that vehicles knew to get over, and we could mark the bike lane through it, as we've done on Washington. I don't know if that's going to be doable, if we add bump outs.
Yeah, I mean, there will be a through bike lane in all directions. It will be dashed to allow a vehicle to occupy that space. But there will not be a physical full width. There'll be a southbound left, there'll be a south through and right, and, no, there won't be that full car width to have like three southbound cars side by side.
Mr. Madigan.
So, my first question is, so $57,600 of engineering fees, is just, is any of that attributable to the cost of the roundabout study, or is this all just about new signals at this intersection?
This is totally this project, yeah. Engineering fees for the roundabout study is a whole different matter.
Okay, so is that a typical number for this kind of thing?
I mean, from a percentage standpoint, it is, yes.
Okay. So, a $200,000 additional preparation, 210, a $450,000 total replacement cost. Are these funds in whole or in part able to be saved to spend on projects such as, like Windsor Road?
Motor fuel tax monies can be used for Windsor Road, yes.
Okay, so, the entire 450, if this project was deferred, could be saved towards Windsor Road, which is a critical need?
Yes.
Okay. Are the, and I understand that the 35 years, that's, that's a tremendous lifetime for any mechanical device. But are we experiencing any kind of difficulties or problems, or high degree of maintenance that would require the replacement of this at this point in time?
The primary reason why these signals need to be replaced is the signal heads do not align over the through travel lanes.
That was.
So, that is a, technically, a violation of the MUTCD.
That was going to be, my next question is, you talked about where, you don't know where the foundation is going to be, and how long the arms are. So, are these not adjustable at all?
No. This is all, they can't be reused.
I mean, they're not adjustable on the arm itself? They cannot be relocated on the arm itself?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Have there been, since the reconfiguration of the lanes of the road, have there been any accidents, or has there been any uptick in accidents at that intersection?
I'm not aware of any, but I've not pulled the reports over the last year or two to confirm that.
And I'm, you know, my whole line of questioning here is, based on, we know we're going to have Windsor Road coming down the road, and, well, no pun intended, how are we going to fund it? And this is a big chunk of money for one intersection, where, you know, if it ain't broke right now, maybe don't fix it, maybe this helps us get there. I don't know. I'm just throwing that out there.
This intersection has been in the mix to be replaced and upgraded for at least the last three to five years.
I asked, actually, Mr. Smythe, to take us, so I can ask a couple of questions.
Okay, go ahead, Carol.
Thank you. You just, I'm just interested in how this project actually fits into that capital improvement plan. And you just said it was on the radar for three to five years.
Yes.
And I'm remembering work being done at this intersection pretty recently, maybe within the last three to five years.
Yeah, it's actually a little longer than that, but there was some ramp work done.
Because right now, it is, they are handicap accessible currently.
Right.
But we're not putting a roundabout here, we're not talking about that. You're talking about changing just the lighting out?
Yes.
The signals?
Yes.
And the signal lighting change is going to cost us as much as a roundabout? Is that what I'm understanding?
No, the roundabout was double this.
Oh, okay, I'm like, wow, that's a lot.
Right.
Okay, and then, how does this compare in the capital improvement plan to other parts of the city, as Mr. Madigan talked about? We know the Windsor Road piece is on, on the horizon. As Mr. Madigan talked about, we know the Windsor Road piece is on, on the horizon. How much of this work will affect that if we decided to do this work right here?
Right now, I'm not saying there's going to be any projects that we have planned for next year that aren't going to occur. We have a real large amount of resurfacing work next year that's slated. In fact, it's about $3 million worth of work, so that money is intact. That's largely motor fuel tax-related dollars, too. This year was a real spike in reconstruction projects that took our staff time. So we didn't really do any portion of an MFT resurfacing project this year. So I'm not aware of anything that isn't, that's going to be delayed or deferred. But I think what happened here is, in our assemblage of the CIP and thinking, what's this project going to cost, it was easy to pull a quarter million dollars off without, and, you know, maybe add my fault to not drilling down further into, well, wait a second, what all is going to happen? Because I usually ask, are we going to use consultants? Are we going to do any geometry changes, any lighting changes, et cetera, et cetera? And by the time, the answer was yes to all that, this was going to happen. And I decided to wait until we actually had the construction bid in hand to know a better number than to come prior to the bid opening.
Just one follow-up. The money from the motor fuel tax, of course, comes from motorists.
You bet.
All of that money for this quote would be out of motor fuel tax.
Yes.
How, what percentage will that take our motor fuel tax balance down to?
Well, it's not a percentage, it's just literally this additional $210,000.
That we planned or did not plan? In the sense, if you had this million-dollar motor fuel tax budget for these projects,
Right.
was this already included in that process?
No, no, what we originally included a year ago was $240,000.
I think, I think what Carol's asking is, what, what is the, well, okay, it asks, it brings a question to my mind. What is left, what is left of the allocation to the city after this 210? I mean, if we have unappropriated funds, what's left after this 210?
Okay.
Unappropriated.
How about I send the council an email with that answer? Okay, basically, I know that the projects we have prepared for next year are still going to move forward. But in our motor fuel tax fund balance, it will impact that fund balance to the tune of $210,000 less. So probably, you know, in theory, will one block not get resurfaced somewhere because of this? The answer is yes. If you want me to identify what that one block is, I can't tell you tonight. But absolutely, there's $210,000 worth of work somewhere.
That won't get done?
In, correct, correct. It's just, it's delayed. I shouldn't say won't get done, it just gets delayed, and it's, you know.
Delayed sounds better. Mr. Row.
I think you answered some of my questions. You said the staff was busy with rehab projects, so that's why we couldn't have them do the $58,000 worth of engineering. I think when we, when this council, the previous council approved this last year, you said there was money in the 2012, 2013 motor fuel tax fund to cover that $58,000 when they approved the engineering funds. So that didn't get expended, apparently, until recently. So it got shifted into the 13, 14 timeframe, is that basically it? So did that $58,000 that was available last year just kind of carry over into this year? Okay, so that was kind of predicted all along. So I guess, I kind of, I'm sorry I missed the whole roundabout discussion, but.
If you'd like to see the report.
Don't do it.
There's videos of the meetings, and there's a report if you want to see the report.
But I think you also answered the question is, I know that now there's kind of a protocol or decision tree when to use roundabouts or not, according to, or came out of the Regional Planning Commission, I think, or something. So that should help. But I think also I heard that it was more than just financial decision at this particular intersection. Just because this was bumped up $200,000 wouldn't make it more likely to approve a roundabout.
No, the roundabout required physical removal of the pavement out there, which is acceptable pavement. That's one of the downsides when you take an existing intersection, is that there's so much geometric changes to build a roundabout, that you're almost removing serviceable concrete or hot mixed asphalt pavement, and then redoing it again. That's what drives the price so high. In contrast to Race and Windsor, when we had the similar discussion, we knew we have to remove the pavement. So if we put the pavement back into something else, you know, what would those costs be? But here, we don't have to, you know, remove and replace the pavement, so that's what would drive the cost up. But one of the key, I mean, if you want to get into this for a moment, one of the key challenges we had with the modern roundabout at this intersection is, is that at some point, pedestrians have to cross the intersection. And because we had to accommodate people with various disabilities, it was almost coming to a point where we had to signalize the crossing for the pedestrians where they would cross the roundabout. And why put in four independent sets of signals that counter, that kind of defeats what we're doing with the roundabouts? Federal highways, and we're continuing to monitor the latest and best management practices for, you know, high pad crossing people with disabilities. And there are some real challenges that roundabouts pose when you have the type of folks that cross at this intersection. So that was a key factor in the abandonment of a roundabout. And we heard, you know, a lot of public input from folks that live in the area and work in the area, that that's a huge concern.
Okay, I can remember that.
There is not an engineering, a good engineering solution to that, even to the state.
I did have just a little off-topic question, but related.
I'm concerned about off-topic things on the agenda.
Well, it's about intersections, this is committee of the whole, so I did have some questions about why it's taken so long to finish the downtown intersections. Are we behind schedule on those?
Actually, not. What's thrown us for a loop is, you want me to go on and talk about this, or?
It's not on the agenda. So if somebody wanted to come and talk about that particular topic, it's not on the agenda.
How about if I, well.
You didn't do it in the staff report, so, you know, I think it's a little bit unfair to the public to do things like that without it being on the agenda. I would like to go to the mayor, and then we could always come back to that at another time.
I just wanted to comment that even though this bid came in higher, we've actually done very well, that a lot of bids have come in much lower. So when you say something might not get done, it's also possible that other things will get done because we might get low bids.
Right.
Thank you. Mr. Smythe.
I'd like to make a motion to send the council with a recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
All right, it's been motioned and seconded. Any other discussion?
Mrs. Marlin.
Just had one more question. If, if we had a competitive bidding situation, would you have expected this construction bid to be significantly lower?
Not significantly, but it may have been $10,000, $20,000 less, maybe. It's hard to say. I, we're always sensitive to what I call bidding climates, or time of year to do bids. And again, had we deferred, or not deferred, postponed the bid opening to later, maybe we'd have gotten another bidder, it's hard to say. There literally aren't a lot of contractors that do this kind of work, and it's mostly a traffic signal project. Okay, when you have a mainly roadwork project like downtown with traffic signals with it, such as at Main and Broadway, then you have a little more bidding activity because the prime or general contractor is a road contractor, he or she still has to go out and get a sub to do the signal work, and there aren't many choices as a subcontractor.
Mr. Smythe, if you can take it just for one more second, I need to just, I'm concerned because I don't think I have enough information on the impact of doing this project at this point in relationship to other projects that may be already in the capital improvement plan to be done in the coming year. I would like to see that before, although, of course, it could go to council, but I'd like to. I think we should have a lot more information on that, especially since part of our discussion earlier was closing a budget deficit, and now we're talking about doing another road. And people won't be to make that distinction between these pots of money. And it sounds to me that this money is also coming from the general fund, even though it's motor fuel tax. It's motor fuel tax money that comes to the city from the state that we pay as drivers. I get that part, but on the other side, the public perception side, I think we really should be able to show how this is going to impact the larger area of the city on roads. And what I hear is potholes on my street, why haven't you fixed those? Before you start talking about fixing some more roads.
Sure.
So I think we should certainly have that come next week.
I'll have an answer in the Thursday packet.
Thank you. Any other discussion before we vote on this one? Mr. Smythe.
Yeah, I think, you know, we have to view the capital improvement plan as sort of a fluid thing. You know, it's a 10-year picture. Things come up and down in priorities, and you have a general feel for it. And so, having been on the council for many years, I, you know, there are dozens and dozens of projects, and I've seen them move, but eventually, things happen and get done that are on that list. You know, there are priorities, and things change. And, and next year, you know, we've got $2 million worth of what sounds like pothole repair in a major way next year. Well, that's a good thing. And so, you know, what I, maybe in the packet would be sort of maybe a, you know, where are we on the CIP sort of thing? You know, sort of a, I guess, a progress report on it might be very useful.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, I appreciate the fact that the bump outs will probably make it safer for the pedestrians at this corner to cross. Certainly, they've been shown to be helpful in other parts of the community. So, you know, that's one plus that we're going to get out of this. It would seem like it could have been, I don't know, useful to have included the reconstruction of this corner with the redevelopment and realignment of Philo Road South when we did that project. If we had known that these signals were going to be replaced, that would have been a smart connection to have made everything happen at once. But that was a different project and had different source of revenue, I imagine. So, you know, we're just doing these things as we can. I know that repavement of some of the streets in our town have been delayed up to four years because we didn't have the money at the halfway through the year to continue on those projects. And eventually, we get to them, so, you know, there's a lot that needs, needs to be done in the future that we're going to be talking about. And Windsor Road is one that, you know, I don't know, Bill, what is your timeline on even trying to start to put together the money for Windsor Road?
Bill, can I ask you to hold that until we actually deal with the motion on the floor? Then we can come back and you can update on that, okay? Right now, we have a resolution to move 2013-09-05R to council. Clerk, would you call the roll on that one? Oh, well, I guess, well, I wanted to. Okay, yes. All in favor of moving this resolution with approval to the council signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? And I'll say nay. Thank you. And then you can answer the question that he just asked about.
Time table for winter.
Time table to finish that Windsor Road case.
I think I need to have a conversation with the finance department and mayor before I can answer that question.
Okay. Thank you. So we have item number seven. On the agenda is ordinance number 2013-09-088, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, city building emergency air-conditioning unit replacement. And, can entertain Mr. Smythe?
I've asked John Collins, our operations manager, to assist me, but let me just give a quick overview. You may recall, it wasn't too long ago that in August, we passed a new ordinance that gives guidance to staff as to when we have an emergency purchase. And you may recall that night, we were also talking about replacing a air conditioning unit that serves the fire station. And in that timeframe of scurrying to deal with that project, we then had this portion of the city building complex air conditioning unit go out at the same time, which we deemed it to be an emergency. So this evening, this is our notification to city council that we need to replace post haste the process of this equipment. It's taken a fair amount of time to receive the proposals because of the intricacies of the work that's needed. But we also have before this evening a budget amendment ordinance. And this has to do with what we call, every year, we have a line item for $30,000. It's called public facility rehab money. And we've already expended the $30,000 in that line item. We did have, fortunately, encumbered from last fiscal year, $19,000 that helped carry us over. But you may recall, when we had those discussions, council had asked, well, do you have a listing of all the HVAC heating, ventilating, air conditioning units throughout the city, and what their age is, and their type, and their life, and whatever? And we attached that, I think it was a 12-page attachment some time ago. But anyway, we're not here tonight to talk about that. But we're here tonight is to receive through a budget amendment ordinance the dollars we need to replace the city building HVAC unit. Its estimated replacement cost about $46,000. We would have no dollars left the rest of the fiscal year, which is another nine more months or so, which kind of hurts because although we don't, the only other planned work we have is we know there are some air handling units at Public Works and one at the Landscape Recycling Center that need to be replaced. And that's more in the four or so $5,000 range. That leaves us with no other dollars to do any other unforeseen work that may come about. Admittedly, this is an unusual year. We usually don't have two major failures occur at the same time, but it did happen. But historically, how we dealt with these items was just kind of a large $30,000 contingency line item. And each, as we would approach a new fiscal year, we would come up with projects that we needed to do, trying to be sensitive to that number, but it could be roof replacement, garage door replacement. I mean, it's a litany of things that can happen, but these two items were large, large impact items. So the memo goes into somewhat of the detail as to, we did receive some pricing from folks, contractors in town. The last page, the back page, I apologize if it's a little confusing, but we're asking for $60,000 in a budget amendment ordinance that will come from general fund reserves, is the funding source now. And that will give us about $15,000 for the rest of the fiscal year, of which we think around $5,000 will deal with some air handling units that need to be replaced, three of them. And then the balances for any other unforeseen possible expenses that we may have with anything to do with facilities.
Are there questions for the committee?
And John's here to.
Answer questions.
Correct if I said misspoke, or any questions I can't answer.
Any questions from?
John Collins is our operations manager, yes.
Are there questions for John? Mr. Roberts?
Yeah. So, John, it sounds like that the unit actually failed, so are we, we basically have to replace that, right? I mean, there's not anything we can do about it, so we have to, so that's the $45,900.
Correct.
So, and I guess that, I don't know, I guess adding the other $15,000, I mean, we don't, wouldn't have to do that, but what's the lifespan or the contingency factor on the two other mechanical replacements?
We have three other units to a Public Works and one out at LRC that have been deemed by two separate contractors that they need to be raised, or be replaced immediately due to either a cracked heat exchanger or a fire hazard due to location and how the furnace was installed.
So it's not a matter of comfort so much as a matter of safety, really?
Correct. And we don't have replacement figures for those units yet, but we're working on them.
Any other questions, Mr. Smythe?
And that needs to be done before winter, right?
Right.
Yeah, otherwise, we'll have freezing employees this winter.
Any other questions from committee?
I move to send the council.
I had one question, but I was going to ask others first. Okay, thank you. On the other, not the ones for the city building that failed a month ago, but on the other ones that are the extra $15,000, did the state fire marshal check those, or do our fire marshals actually do a report? those, or do our fire marshals actually do a report on those? He said life safety issues, which would say to me that they've been inspected by the state fire marshal, and they have actual report as to why they're.
Now, this is something an HVAC engineer and/or contractor would evaluate, and again, the age, I would say the ones at the Public Works garage are at least forty to fifty years old, probably.
One, one unit's close to forty years old.
Forty years old.
And then the, the unit out of LRC Landscape Recycling Center, it's very unsure exactly how old that unit is.
So, it's not necessarily safety. It is old.
It is old, and it is.
But it's not a life safety issue.
It is not functioning properly.
Okay.
I mean, fire department does inspections every year of our facilities, but this is not something they would climb up in a ladder and see that there's cracks on the heat exchanger or whatever. And, you know, they may say something about, we have something too close to the physical unit, that may be a combustible, it'd be a hazard, but the unit itself, no, that would not be a fire marshal determination.
Okay. Sorry, Mr. Brown?
Do you happen to know how much we'll save in annual electric costs for the, with the added efficiency of this unit?
No, that is not going to happen.
Okay. All right, no other questions? Mr. Smythe?
Well, I, I think I'll point out that, you know, we, we blew this year's money on the air conditioning for the fire department, right? And, and such, and, and so, the, I think these eight, the, the heaters out at the garages were planned to be replaced, and there's just simply no money left in the fund, right?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah. So, that's, so we're, we're dealing with planned replacements with part of this money. So, anyway, I move to send this to council with a recommendation for approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Brown, move, move Mr. Smythe to second by Mr. Brown. I mean, Mr. Roberts, I'm sorry. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposition? Thank you. And finally, ordinance number 2013-09-090, an ordinance amending Schedule J of Section 23-183 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code prohibiting parking at all times on certain streets, Prairie Winds Drive, Prairie Winds Circle. I guess you're going to speak to that one as well?
I will.
Thank you.
And council member Manigan can chime in also, but at our last meeting, we had this on the agenda with the Traffic Commission residents, and then Mr. Tatman contacted us and said that sometimes there's parking on both sides of the street, which really narrows the street for like an ambulance or a fire response, and they had asked if we could limit parking at one side of the street. We met with the residents there, we put together a map that had suggested no parking locations, and then this item was brought to a meeting last of the, of the area residents last Saturday. Mr. Tatman contacted us to say that the residents were fine with this suggested no parking, and that they're all in favor of this for this little community area, so the ordinance has been prepared to reflect the no parking per the request of the residents.
All right. Ms. Manigan?
Yeah, I would just like to chime in and, and thank Bill and John Collins for their input at the Traffic Commission. This one truly is a no-brainer. The residents, in fact, are requesting this. I drove the loop. It is a fairly narrow street. I mean, it's, it's, it's wide enough, but if people are parked on both sides, there is an issue with ambulance access, which is a, definitely a concern in this area. There are a lot of older residents there, so this truly is a very easy decision. The residents are for it. It makes everything safer, snow removal a little easier, so I would move that this be forwarded to council for approval.
Second. All right. Forwarded by Mr. Manigan, seconded by Ms. Marlin. All right. Go ahead, Mr. Man. Roberts?
And I don't have any problem with removing, I mean, I can see, I probably imagined that this would be a discussion that would come up on this, on this subdivision. The residents are allowing the removal of the trap, the parking at, at their own curbside, and so they're going to be walking across the street to, any cars that are parked by friends or extra visitors to their homes. Was that talked about as a convenience or inconvenience for them? I mean, I guess what I was wondering is why the, why the, why the removal at the curb of the homes rather than across the street, which is probably where people would rather see removal? Is that, I mean, what was the discussion on that?
Well, there's a bunch of driveways there, so if there was parking restricted on the other side, you'd have that potential of vehicles parking too close to drives, or less parking spaces available. On the south Prairie Winds Drive area, it was kind of six, one half dozen another there, and quite honestly, we just listened to what they preferred to have, and we, it could be either way, and, and they prefer this route, this layout.
Yeah, maybe it's also because of snow removal. I mean, if there was a plow that came through, there would be.
Yes.
Plowing closer to their drive.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Just a question.
Well, the other thing I would say to that is the, the traffic count out here is extremely low, so I don't think crossing the street to a parked car is a, necessarily a hazard. I mean, I, I think that the, the public safety concern about ambulance passage and, and frankly, safe car passage between two cars parked on both sides of the street outweighs the convenience of parking on the, on the residential side of the, of the street.
Thank you. Well, seeing all the discussion, all in favor of forwarding this to council with approval, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposition? Thank you. And we have one added item by Mr. Smythe.
Yes, as is our usual four-year, every four-year practice, we, we develop council goals. It's time to get that process underway. Slightly different approach, of course, reflects the makeup of the council. Suggestion, a couple of suggestions have come forward in my soliciting from, from you individually. One is to develop a survey that we, that we take to residents, and a short one. Another one is to use the fifth Monday that we have coming up to get some initial feedback, both from ourselves and from the public, maybe some staff members that want to speak up. Four years ago, Mike Monson coordinated this very nicely for us in keeping it all together, and so I would, I would propose that we meet next Monday, those of us that can, enough of us, how many of us can make it next Monday? Maybe? Okay. Okay. If you can't make it, provide, provide something, and I'll, I'll include it in, in the report. Again, ideas that you have for survey questions, ideas for what we want to solicit from the public, and of course, preliminary ideas of what you'd like to see in the goals, possibly reflecting what we've done in the past two sets of goals. I'll, I'll send out a reminder link to, to those again. So, I guess the basic issue is we'd, we'd be scheduling a meeting next Monday, a study session next Monday, usual time of seven. Good with people? So, seven o'clock next Monday?
Can we move it to six?
We could move it to six. We could do whatever.
Would it be a problem if we moved it to six on Monday?
Can we put a time limit on it?
Oh, yeah. An hour and a half?
Yeah.
From six, six to seven thirty? Is that, is that six to seven thirty, study session on council goals? We'll develop some ideas and parameters and, and go from there. The one thing is Diane, it was Diane's idea to, to work on a survey. I, I fed her, I gave her back some, I gave her some feedback, and she and I could start working on, I have envisioned roughly a three-question survey, well, four questions, three, two that are specific, and one that's more open-ended. The fourth one would be a geographic one, you know, like what intersection do you live near, so that we get an idea of how it's distributed around the city. We're not interested in income or anything like that, we just simply want to know where the, where the feedback is coming from, see if we get a geographic distribution in the survey.
Diane?
And this would be on the city's website, so we'd do something like Survey Monkey, so it would dump right into a database, and we'd go from there.
All right. So, Mr. Brown?
Yes, just on the time limit, we may have public input, so that would be an hour and a half of discussion for us after public input.
That includes public input.
I don't think you can limit public input.
Well, we can give it all to the public because the council has plenty of time to set its own goals, but we do want to hear from the public, so I think the session on Monday really should be encouraging the public to say, what do you want the councils, what would you like to see the council do in the next cycle? So, I think if I was going to give something, I would be giving it to the public. Diane?
Yeah, I'd second that. The other question is how do we pub, we need to publicize this to make sure people know that this is happening and.
Mayor?
I think you're, you're going to want public input all along. They're, they're going to want to, you know, sort of come to grips with what we've already set up in the past and discuss that, so it would be like any other meeting, you always have public input at the beginning.
Charlie?
Yeah, there, there are a couple of requests of Mike on this one, one of which would be Diane would like some, some pieces out of the budget to incorporate into the survey and to get people started with monetary issues. Another one would be, it's been a while since we've done an update of the, of the previous set of goals, we probably should have those more or less finalized, where we are on any of those, so we know what's left over, what we want to continue, that sort of thing. So, that, that would also serve as a starting point, a launching point to solicit from the public additional ideas and, and important, and levels of importance from things. So, I figure next week will be sort of a, a give and take, fairly informal, get ideas, and then try to refine them.
Okay. All right. So, that'll be our first attempt at trying to solicit input on Monday. Madam Clerk?
To tell you the honest truth, when you all are having a study session, you really don't need any public input for that, because according to what the attorneys have told us in our meetings, is that you have a right to go into your study sessions without public input, because what you're doing is just generally discussing items and things that you would like to come forward or to put together for that. So, you really don't need a public input next Monday. However, if that's what you insist on having, you can do that, but just to let you know, you really don't have to have public input at your study session.
And maybe we actually should call it a public hearing so that we could hear from the public what they'd like to do. It doesn't have to be a study session, or we, you know, but I think part of the process is to, or part of the idea was to get input from the public as to what they like the city to consider, and the city council to consider in the next session, so. Mr. Smythe?
Like I said, I, I viewed it as fairly informal, and there might be some literally questions back and forth, ideas get tossed back and forth, and so we, we may be more comfortable to sitting in chairs right here rather than around the ideas and, and really engaging and getting some notes, you know? I think, I think we really want to encourage it to be fairly, fairly informal, but, you know, generating ideas and, and, but I think we'll start with some summaries of where we, where we've been, if Mike can pull those together.
Mayor Pressley and Dan.
Yeah, it could be a meeting in the Urbana City Council, and the agenda is a discussion of goals, and then you have public input. I wouldn't be afraid that we're going to have four hours of public input, because we're just getting started, so, but I just think we should set a time limit on it, so we don't get too exhausted by it.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, and I guess I was going to ask, are we going to, is it going to be totally open-ended, or do you want to focus on a couple of topics? Do you expect it to be topical, or just whatever shows up?
I could answer. Well, to me, I think it should be, as Mr. Smythe described it, as informal. The mayor said we could set it up to receive input from the public, and I, I would hate to say we need to talk about these three items, because somebody's concern won't even be put on the table if we do it that way. But, but I agree that we should time limit it, and I, I'm very happy to facilitate it. I'm pretty good at cutting people off, but, so that we could stay within the hour and a half time, so that we could gather more input from the public that shows up for this session, so.
And, can I respond?
Yes, please.
Okay, so, so my, my thought was that, you know, if, as long as, as long as it's, we, we cover like all the interests or the areas of attention that the city would, would want to consider, so it's not, we're not receiving public input on just like from two, you know, maybe major advocate groups that might, you know, bring forty people to the meeting to have public input.
I, I wouldn't restrict anybody from coming to the meeting, no matter whose group they're from, whether it's the realtors of the community that are concerned about our, some of our laws. I think it should just be open to the public, and they can bring topics that we should consider, and whether we consider them or not as part of our goals, it's going to be up to the council ultimately. So, you know, that's my, Charlie.
And, and we can set, you know, if we get forty people, we can let people know, you know, we've got an hour and a half, we want to let everybody speak, and, but I think that's why it's important to start with a, with a summary of where we've been.
Yeah.
The past goals, I think will help set the, the table for the kinds of things that we've been doing and, and the kinds of goals that we're, we're looking to redevelop.
And, and possibly Mike will work on that, I'm certain that maybe the mayor could do that update, and then we can move straight into the public comment section, so. Okay. I guess we'll stand adjourned then, if that's all the business of the council. Thank you.